The March 11th meeting of the Kansas City Kansas Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. Take a couple of introductions before we get started, we have Karen Jones, who's serving as the Vice Chair tonight. She's with us online. Gunnar Hand, who is Director of Planning and Urban Design is with us, along with Janet Parker, the Executive Assistant to the Department of Planning and Urban Design. We also have Mr. Conway, who is our Legal Counsel with the Unified Government. We have the following Commissioners present here tonight. Again, Vice Chair Karen Jones online. Commissioner Beth is here with me in the chambers. Commissioner Joseph Straws, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Beverly Easterwood, Commissioner Mary Beth Schwartz, and Commissioner Miller are all online. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Secretary Parker, who will read our opening statement and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to take care of the one order of business?
Yes, I do. I didn't know how you wanted to handle that.
Yes, let's go ahead and take care of that, please.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and go down to the podium. It's kind of awkward to be on this side of the podium, especially with you. So, so I'm standing here with Mr. James Connelly. I used to refer to him as Commissioner Connelly, but want to read a proclamation. Mr. Connelly was a board member for a Commissioner for many years, and so he has stepped down and we want to honor him with this plaque. So I want to read what it says. So from the Kansas City Kansas Board of Zoning Appeals and City Planning Commission proclamation. Whereas James Connelly was appointed to the City Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals on January 23rd, 2014, and served until his resignation effective December 31st, 2023. And whereas he will be remembered for his question to the special use permit applicants, why did you let your permit expire? And whereas he consistently demonstrated through word and action a deep compassion and love for his community, its present and future well-being. And whereas he steadfastly promoted the interests, goals, and objectives of the City Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. Now therefore, the City Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals, Kansas City, Kansas, Wyandotte County, wishes to recognize and commend James Connelly for his contributions to this commission and the community. It's kind of like, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been an absolute pleasure working with you. We sparred a couple of times, but it was always professional and I always appreciated that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was your plaque. And we're gonna take a quick picture. All right, thanks for coming down to take care of this. Okay Janet, I'm gonna turn the meeting back over to you.
I have another question for you, sir. When I talked to Mrs. Yui, as you know, she is not one to be in the forefront. She likes to be in the background. So I asked her if tonight wasn't convenient, if she would come next month. And she said she would prefer just to pick it up, but to let everyone know how much she appreciated it. And with your permission, I would like to go ahead and read it into the record.
Absolutely, I would love that. Thank you.
Okay. This is the Kansas City Kansas City Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals proclamation. Whereas Joanne R. Yui was appointed to the City Planning Commission May 15, 1997, and served until her resignation effective December 31, 2021. And whereas on January 12, 2015, she was elected Vice Chairman of the City Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, and assumed the chairmanship on October 12, 2013, when a vacancy occurred, and was then elected Chairman on January 11, 2016, and served in that capacity until January 14, 2019. And whereas she was appointed and reappointed consecutively by four different mayors. And whereas she will be remembered as an advocate for economic development, housing resurgence, and revitalization of her beloved home of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. And whereas she served as a conscientious and dedicated member of the City Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals during her tenure. And whereas she consistently demonstrated through word and action a deep passion and love for her community, its present and future well-being. And whereas she steadfastly promoted the interests, goals, and objectives of the City Planning Commission and the citizens of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. Now for, now therefore, the City Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals wish to recognize and commend Joanne R. Yui for over 24 years of contributions to this commission, board, and community. Jeff Carson, Chairman, March 11, 2024.
Thank you for doing that Janet, and for the record, thank you Joanne for 24 years of serving with the Planning Commission. That's just amazing, amazing community service and we, we all thank you. So even though I don't have a big crowd and I've got a crowd online, how about a little show of hands for Joanne? Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will now go ahead and read the statement, if that's okay.
Thank you.
We would like to welcome those participating by telephone, Zoom, or in the commission chamber to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom or are present in the commission chamber. And Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background. Board members that are participating by Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak. And after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in the commission chamber, please state your name before speaking once the chairman recognizes you. For those members of the public attending the meeting virtually this evening, please use the raise your hand feature if you want to speak on an application. If you are present in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called. After the chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting in the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@wiko kck.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the board. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of people who are in support or opposition that did not speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them. The staff will make their recommendation and the board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions to approve shall include the staff's conditions unless otherwise stated in the motion. Mr. Chairman, we have two applications tonight on the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda. The first one is BOZA 2023-055, Willie Brantley Jr. for a property at 1718 North 13th Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Brantley.
Good evening.
Go ahead and give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do tonight.
Okay, my name is Willie Brantley. We're discussing a property at 1718 North 13th Street, Kansas City, Kansas, 66102.
Okay.
We are requesting a building setback variance along the, the north Walker 13th side of the corner lot from 25 foot to 12 foot. Due to the limited 52-foot by 120-foot size of the lot, which requires a 10-foot building setback for fire and the fact that the corner lot with existing nearly 17-foot right-of-way easement, in addition to the need for safe vehicular ingress and egress furthest from the intersection, we believe that this is the best, the best placement for the structure on this site. Is also the best configuration for parking and previous surfaces, including landscaping. We are requesting a a parking count variance from the required six to the total of five all-street parking spaces, of which one will be designated for ADA. And we'll have the required five foot access aisle adjacent to it. This will allow us to meet the six parkings, six-foot parking setback and 30-inch continuous shrub screening on-site required along 13th Street to the east. Given the small footprint and amount of accessory storage space within the building structure is highly unlikely this lower parking count would ever be fully occupied. We are requesting a dimensions of parking area variance of the required, from the required 44-foot to for 90-degree pattern, single load aisle to 40. This will allow us to meet the six parkings, six-foot parking setback and 30-inch continuous shrub screening on-site required along Walker Street to the north and to the C3 property to the south. It will also allow us to meet the 30-inch continuous shrub screening on-site required along Walker Street to the north. Given the simplicity of the parking area and the single access route, we do not believe this will present an unsafe condition for persons or property on-site. And I'll just yield my time for that.
Okay, I want to just ask you one quick question. Is it your desire to hear this case tonight? Or is it my understanding that you wanted to get a holdover so that you have a little bit more time to work with staff to come up with a solution?
Well, yeah, that was one of the things that we were looking at because with the requirements that you're asking from a budget perspective, we didn't want to go down that rabbit hole so deep that we just couldn't finish the project. So what we want to do is try to come to terms with what you guys will allow us to do versus what we can do to actually get the structure up.
Okay, so you tell me, do you want to hear it tonight? Or do you want to, you want to request a holdover and work with Director Hand and that department to see if we can work out something that's more palatable before we go yea or nay on this tonight?
Uh, let's try.
Because the decision that we'll have tonight will be final on you. So do you want to try to work something out or do you want to, you want to hear it tonight?
Well, I think we, let's just go ahead and hear it tonight because it, I mean, no need to keep continuing it. If, if we can't work it out, we can't work it out.
Okay, all right. So with that, I will ask, are there any questions from the commission? I am not seeing, I am seeing one, Commissioner Jones.
Just for the record, I think I heard Mr. Brantley say for variance number two, from six spaces to five, and my report says seven are required to five that are being requested.
I believe you're correct, Mr. Jones. Did you want to clarify that?
Uh, okay, is Mr. Wayland on it on Zoom? That's my architect.
Okay.
And I could, he could answer that question.
Excuse me, what? I'm sorry, sir. Well, the requirement is seven, and we'll hear from the director in a minute. And you're requesting a, you're requesting five, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so you, you want to have a total of five?
Want to have a total of five.
Okay, regardless of what the requirement is, and we'll get that clarified, but you want to, you're requesting five?
Exactly.
Okay, all right, we'll get, we'll, we'll get some clarification on that. Commissioner Jones, did I answer that question, or at least for now?
Thank you, Chairman Carson.
Commissioner Easterwood.
Yes, I had a, wanted a clarification. It seemed like someplace in the application I was reading that said that there were, there was an existing improvement on the, on the lot that would prevent compliance with staff's recommendations. Have, is that correct, or have those improvements been demolished?
Has the improvement or the structure on the property been removed at this point?
Exactly, it has.
It has been removed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Right? Any other questions from commission members? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience online or in person that wants to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Gunnar Hand. Excuse me, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, as the applicant mentioned, we have three variances before us. One for a corner lot setback and the other two related to the parking design. This is in the, sorry, this is being heard in conjunction with Plan Review 2024-005 of the City Planning Commission later this evening as well. This is located in the Northeast area plan. Staff has received no letters in support, no letters in opposition. There's some older notices violation from when the property was vacant. All would be addressed by the proposed project. I will make a quick note, the parking requirement, the staff calculated it based on the building proposed would be seven. If you will recall, and for those newer planning commissioners, about four years ago before the pandemic, the Unified Government had gone down path to update the zoning code, including the parking requirements. As a point of reference, we usually state that, and it's included in the staff report, what that new parking standard would have required. That new parking standard would have required four parking spaces, which would have been met by this. But because it's still the current code, seven are required, five are provided, the variances needed in order to move forward. Staff does recommend approval of the corner side yard setback, which you can kind of see here, north is page down, and, no, no, north is page up, sorry, in this, in this drawing. We're recommending denial of the parking variances more as it relates to the plan review. Currently, the plan review, which will be heard later this evening, staff's recommending denial because of the number of deviations it would require from a site planning standpoint and from a materiality standpoint. Currently, Mr. Brantley has bought a pre-manufactured commercial building that he'd like to place on the site. And we believe that its placement could be addressed in a better manner. But as he mentioned earlier, there's some cost constraints and other things. And so we are voting, are recommending denial of the parking variances, namely because the parking's in front of the building, not on the side. There is a way where we can address that. And we've provided a couple of options to the applicant for consideration. And I think that's as far as I'll go with the BOZA, because I don't want to get into the plan review too much with one last thing. If the applicant were to work, if this were held over and were to work with the staff to redesign the site plan, again, there would probably still be some deviations required from the commercial design guidelines. But it could also potentially trigger other variances. So if this, if this conversation does hypothetically lead us to a holdover recommendation, staff would recommend 60 days. We've already missed the notification period for the April meeting.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Or clarifications? So your recommendations for approval of variances one and three and denial of two?
Approval of one, denial of two and three.
I'm sorry. Denial of two and three.
We do have conditions of approval if all are accepted.
All right. Questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Jones.
Gunnar, I understood that the applicant might have some budgetary issues. Do you think then, because I get the number of deviations and trying to avoid that. But do you think with the communication you've had before, are you recommending something perhaps that wasn't previously recommended that might be within their budget? Or are you basically going to be recommending some, rerecomending some things that have already been communicated?
Staff's included, Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, staff's included two different options, one that's on the screen now and then I believe this one. These are the ones that we've already provided to the applicant and draft staff report. So we would think we would, this would be the starting point if it were to be held over.
Commissioner Straws.
I think in, in conjunction with Ms. Jones's question, which is what I actually had as well. Where, have we had conversations before we got to this point about these two recommendations? That way, we don't get in, so you have shown them this and talked to them about these particular plans and they, they don't like these suggestions?
We haven't heard a response regarding these, these suggestions, no.
Yeah, because I mean, the applicant said, let's just go for it tonight. And if we deny it, we deny it. That's why I'm, I'm asking because there's a lot of, you're saying to unapprove of, and then we've got these variances that I guess they haven't talked to. If we hold it over, I guess that gives us an opportunity to talk about them. But I guess they had an opportunity to talk about them before tonight, too. I guess they didn't choose that, or how does that work?
Well, there's a bunch of paths forward here. I think that if, if the Board of Zoning Appeals agreed with staff and felt like we could find a design solution, we would recommend a holdover for 60 days and we could hash this out. Again, staff has communicated our response and provided these two alternatives ahead of this meeting. And we didn't get a redesign submitted ahead of the meeting, so that's why we're here right now, kind of in between. But if the Board of Zoning Appeals wanted to recommend approval of all of these, we would try to address, or we would need to go through all the deviations later this evening with Planning Commission, both from a site plan standpoint, but also from a materiality. Again, this is a pre-manufactured, as I understand it, Mr. Brantley, metal, metal building.
Okay, Commissioner Easterwood.
Yes, Mr. Chair, is it appropriate to ask the applicant what their response was to the two options?
To the redesign?
Yes.
All right, I'll find out. Mr. Mr. Brantley, did, were you, did staff talk to you about a possible redesign of the site?
Yes, they did.
And are you not interested in redesigning your site to make it work?
I, I am interested in the redesign because from my understanding, they're wanting us to, the original pre-application meeting, they suggested that we move the building to the west, which would be to the back of the lot. For whatever reason, that philosophy changed or that requirement changed. So now they want us to move the building toward the 13th Street end of the lot, which I'm open to that, just long as we, you know, my, from my position, we're 13th Street, you know, I understand Legends-type quality is, is like top tier. And, and from a budget aspect, we could get it there, but I'm just saying we just need some latitude.
But you're, so you're open to discussing it?
Yes.
All right, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. Okay, thank you. Commissioner, Mr., sorry, Commissioner Easterwood, did that take care of your question?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Miller, did you still have anything or did we address it? You're muted.
Sorry, all I was going to say was, it sounds like he's okay with us holding over. I was just going to ask if he was aware of, if we didn't hold it over and we did deny it about the bar of not reapplying. I think it's for six months or a year. So I just want to make sure he knew that before he told us not to hold it over or something.
Okay, and you do understand if we deny you tonight, you can't reapply. For what is it, a year or is it six months?
I'd have to double-check what it is for Boza cases. I was only aware of, or I'm only remembering currently the, the requirement to wait a year for change of zone and special use permit denials, which this case is not seeking.
Okay.
I think there is something, I apologize, Mr. Miller, I don't know what it is.
I'm, I'm not positive what it is either. I just remember we had something, it was years ago, but we had a question like this once where I think we denied it and there was some bar. And we may have known about that at that point. So I just, I don't remember what it is, but I think there is, I think it's less than special use permit. I think it's only six months, but I just was making sure he was aware.
If I'm remembering correctly, if a variance requires action, not all variances require action, because some things are, you're requesting forgiveness, not approval. In this case, it would require action. You have six months to build it or the variance is null and void, basically. So if we approve the variances today, we'd have to get some level of starting, i.e. a building permit within six months or the variance would lapse to build the parking outside of the standard design, not necessarily the number. Staff's recommendation, if Mr. Brantley is willing, would be to hold over for 60 days, both this and later at Planning Commission. Because if we are able to move the building, it may occur other variances. And we would rather just do it all at the same time as opposed to voting some variances now, using that to design the project in the interim and then coming back with new variances. It would be cleaner for all parties if we got to the right design and see where the cards lay.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jones.
I, I was just going to say that I agree and remember with what, there being a length of time, what Commissioner Miller was saying. I agree with what Director Hand just said. And just for the record, I have a level of discomfort with if we didn't hold it over. It just seems like there's some information. Uh with if we didn't hold it over, it just seems like there's some information. Um and some things that the applicant needs to know before going forward. And so for that reason, uh I'm ready for a motion if you are.
All right, go ahead, please.
Uh, I make a motion that we hold this case over for sixty days.
All right, Janet, what would be the date of that meeting?
Let me check real quick and then I will tell you. Um, I do have, need to have a reason for holding over the application over the minutes.
Can I simply say unreadiness? On the part of the.
On the part of the applicant?
Yes.
All right.
And that meeting would be May thirteenth.
All right, so the motion is for a holdover for sixty days to. Would you rather have it so that the staff and the applicant work can work together? To come to an agreeable plan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
I'm good with that. That's exactly right.
All right, thank you. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
One second, please. Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over this application until the May thirteenth meeting for the applicant and staff to work together. Towards a resolution. Of this application passes nine in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you. We'll we'll see you both in sixty days.
All right.
All right, good luck. Let's let's get it worked out.
Our next application is BOZA twenty twenty four dash zero zero one. Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consultants for property at ten thousand Hollingsworth Road. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, you're ready to go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson and I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, fourteen five hundred Parallel Road, Unit R, Basin, Kansas six six zero zero seven. And I would actually like to do similar to what the last applicant do, the did, the owner um would like to hold over for thirty days if possible. Um just to work with staff a little bit to kind of tweak the the design of the property and um try to meet some of the requirements that staff is requiring.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, just in case we have members of the public, I'm going to open up the public portion of the meeting. Did anyone come tonight to speak in favor or in opposition of this request? Please raise your hand or come forward if you're in the chambers. Seeing no one, we'll go to staff and is that okay with you for thirty day holdover?
Gunner Hand, Director Planning and Urban Design, staff is agreeable to thirty day holdover.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? And if not, I would seek a motion. Mr. Jones?
Per the petitioner's request, I make a motion to hold over this case for thirty days.
Right. Thank you. Motion made for holdover for thirty days. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over this application until the April eighth twenty twenty four meeting, as requested by the applicant. Passes nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We'll see you next month, uh, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Okay, Janet, that concludes our agenda, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you, folks. We'll take a five minute recess and we'll get going on the City Planning Commission. Thank you.
I can't remember. Yes, something changed since Sunday. I thought we were going to do it at twelve thirty. Instead, one, one, and let me see what. Same. Yes.
Janet, are you ready? As soon as Gunner gets back, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome to the March eleventh meeting of the City Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm going to be serving as chair of tonight's meeting. Going to make a couple of short introductions and we'll get on with the meeting. First of all, I want to introduce Karen Jones, who is online with us. She's serving as vice chair. Gunner Hand here in the chambers with us, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Along with Janet Parker, who is online. She is the executive assistant to the Department of Planning and Urban Design. Jeff Conway is here with us in the chambers. Is the Unified Government Legal Counsel representing with us tonight. And the following Board of Commissioners are present. In the chambers, I have Commissioner Dwayne Beth. Online again, Commissioner Karen Jones, Commissioner Joseph Straws, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong. Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Beverly Easterwood, Commissioner Mary Beth Schwartz, and Commissioner Jake Miller. With that, I will turn it over to Commissioner, sorry, to Secretary Parker. I almost gave you a promotion. Although I don't know if this is a promotion. Uh, and she will read the opening statement on how we're run tonight's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, before I read the opening statement, um, we had an application that was held over from last month's meeting. But I did not include it on the agenda tonight because I I inadvertently forgot that you. The commission had held it over and I thought that the planner was holding it over. So anyway, what we need to do is I need to. Request that the commission put this item back on the agenda and then. We are requesting to hold it over for another thirty days because the staff and the applicant were not able to meet. This past meeting. The application is special use permit application SP twenty twenty three dash one one zero. Pick and pull renewal of a special use permit to operate an automobile salvage yard at eleven forty two South Twelfth Street. And if.
I need a motion just to accept it to be added to the agenda, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
At this point, yes.
I move that we add special use permit twenty twenty three one one zero for pick and pull back to the agenda.
All right, thank you. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Do we need to vote? Uh, Janet?
Can you take a uh just a a voice vote, all those in favor?
All right, all those in favor of adding it to the agenda, please say aye. And if you're online, if you'd raise your hand for me.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we look good. Thank you very much.
Now, Mr. Chairman, what we're looking for is the applicant and the staff agrees to hold over this application. Until the April eighth meeting in order for the staff and applicant to meet and discuss. The application as was directed at last month's meeting.
And you want that at this time?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I move that uh the City Planning Commission hold over special use permit twenty twenty three dash one one zero. Uh until the April eighth meeting so that staff, at the request of staff and the applicant, so they can work together.
All right, thank you. Motion been made to hold it over for thirty days by Commissioner Miller and it's been seconded by Commissioner Jones. Is that correct? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call on the holdover motion.
Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Commissioner Schwartz?
I, I, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over. This application.
I'm sorry, I will get it, I'll get her muted.
Okay.
Thank you.
To hold over this application until the April eighth twenty twenty four meeting to allow the staff and the applicant the opportunity to meet. Passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
And now, uh with your permission, I'll go ahead and read the opening statement.
Thank you.
We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar or in person in the commission chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background. Planning Commission members attending by Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in person in the commission chamber, when Chairman Carson recognizes you, please state your name before speaking. For those members of the public in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called. And the chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting. And anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which will review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, March twenty eight, twenty twenty four. For final plats and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time and the Planning Commission may, by two thirds majority vote. Extend any speaker's time in five minute increments. The commission will ask for a show of hands of those persons in support and in opposition that do not wish to speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their rec. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@yco-kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda and items on the consent agenda are final plaits, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda and when I have completed the list, the Chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff's recommendation. If you are in the Commission Chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and the item you want to remove from the consent agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made and members of the Commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision on Thursday, March 28, 2024 at 7:00 PM. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the February 12, 2024 Planning Commission Minutes. Special Use Permit SP 2024-003, John Mann with Avenue of Life. Renewal of a Special Use Permit SP 2022-023, which expires June 2, 2024, to continue to operate transitional housing for youth at 3535 Wood Avenue. Plan Review Application PR 2024-001, Duane Cash with Insight Design. Final Development Plan to Construct New Athletic Fields for the New Piper High School at 13021 Leavenworth Road. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the Commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
Thank you. Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated March 11, 2024. The application, other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the publication in the ECHO for the Special Use Permit, and the notices to property owners. The Commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Janet. Does anyone on the Commission have anything they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and accept a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda when ready. Commissioner Jones?
I make a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda as reported.
Thank you. Motion made for approval of the consent agenda items made by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second? Commissioner Ernst, thank you for that. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And will the plan review go before Board of Commissioners?
No, only the Special Use Permit.
Special Use Permit will be heard at the Board of Commissioners meeting on March, excuse me, March 28th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that completes the consent agenda and the Commission will now consider the non-consent agenda. We do have two items that we're going to hear together. Change of Zone Application COZ 2023-024, Chris Esley with the Prime Company. Change of Zone from R1 Single Family District to RP5 Planned Apartment District to construct a 132-unit apartment complex at 5901 and 5945 Parallel Parkway. And the corresponding Master Plan Amendment, MPL 2023-012, Master Plan Amendment from Low Density Residential Citywide Comprehensive Plan to High Density Residential Citywide Comprehensive Plan. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated March 11, 2024. The application, other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the WIED Echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elsie. Are you in the audience? Hey, Mr. Adrian, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Go ahead, please give us your name and address and tell us about your project.
Yeah, I'm Josh Adrian. I'm representing the Prime Company today. I'm from Manhattan, Kansas. Our offices are 2021 Vanessa Place in Manhattan, Kansas. We would actually request that the Commission hold over our agenda, our application for next month. We are not ready to proceed with this application at this time.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant on their request for holdover?
I don't have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
I don't, he, did he give his address? Manhattan? I know he said Manhattan.
Yes, 2021 Vanessa Place.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. Does anyone come tonight to speak on this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. Not seeing anyone, so we'll go ahead and go to Commissioner, I'm sorry, to Director Hand and get his comment on the holdover request.
Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design, staff is agreeable to the 30-day holdover for both the change of zone and the master plan amendment.
All right, thank you. Janet, can those both be handled in one, in one motion?
Yes, I believe that we can do that.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? And if not, I will stand for a motion to hold over both cases. COZZ 2023-024 and MPL 2023-012. Commissioner Easterwood?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, sir, I make a motion to that effect.
All right, motion for holdover made for those two cases previously mentioned. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over Change of Zone 024 and Master Plan Amendment 012 until the April 8th Planning Commission meeting passes nine in favors and none opposed.
Thank you.
That will now take us to our Special Use Permits and the first one is Special Use Permit Application SP 2023-109, Joseph Aker, Special Use Permit to Operate a Short-Term Rental in two of the four units in the town home at 3059 Francis Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated March 11, 2024. The application, other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the WIED Echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Mr. Aker, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please start off with your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Joe Aker and my residential, residential address is 1742 Bellevue Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri, 64108.
All right, go ahead and tell us about your project, please, if you would.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your consideration this evening. My wife and I jointly own a four-unit townhome at 3059 3061, 3063, and 3065 Francis Street. It's a single building with four units and individual addresses. Currently, all four of the units are in service as long-term rentals. We would like to apply for a special use permit to operate two of the four units on a short-term rental basis. The tenants in those units are currently on a month-to-month, month-to-month leases and we would transition, assuming approval, we would transition those units to short-term rental when those tenants move out. We would initially at least plan to self-manage the short-term rentals as we self-manage the long-term rentals, though we may in the future get third-party management for either or both of the short-term rental operation or long-term rental operation. We do have experience, short-term rental self-managing with our own property at 1742 Bellevue in Kansas City, Missouri, the main house and a separate unit within the house. I want to thank the staff for their guidance through this process and also state that we agree to all the conditions that were included in the staff report.
Okay, anything else?
That's it for my summary, but happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes, Mr. Aker, which two units are you asking for the short-term rental?
We're requesting the Special Use Permit for 3063 and 3065 Francis Street.
Are those the two adjacent on which end of the property?
Those are the two units to the western end of the property.
Okay.
So the application address is that, is that one parcel? Because it's 3059, you're asking for 3063 and what's the other one?
3065. It is one parcel and one building with individually addressed units.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Muller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gunner, could you walk me through what the rules are for more than one short-term rental on a block? And the rule that, not real clear to me about having more than one short-term rental in a building?
Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design, so the ordinance really kind of says two things. It's one special use permit per block. We mostly get single-family homes for short-term rentals. We did write out in the new ordinance adopted last May in 2023, different building typologies, so going from two-plus units, it changes how many units can be included in that special use permit for a single parcel. So in this case, a fourplex allows a maximum of two special use permits. I believe it is a maximum of two up to 12 units. And then if we start getting into a multifamily building, more than 12 units, it grows with, from there. I believe we max out it however many units. It's a ratio of however many units are in the total complex.
Didn't, didn't we just have an issue on Sixth Street where we made someone use the entire building as one structure as opposed to two? Two separate short-term rentals?
I don't think, I'm not exactly recalling that project on Sixth.
419 and 417, I believe it was 417 North Sixth. It just seems like the rules are getting a little, I don't know what the rules are, which is why I asked you to explain them to me again.
So, right, okay, the one on Sixth Street is a mixed-use building. They have one above and one underneath, so it is, again, a unit with up to two. It's a single property with up to two units and because that active mixed-use function is kind of like a, what do they call them? Top-over-bottom duplex. They were allowed two units as well. So duplex to 12 gets two short-term rental units max. And then I believe after 12 units, it starts to go up with different brackets. I can't recall exactly what those are past 12. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Director Hand? I'm sorry, we're not at that point yet. I'm sorry, other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anyone want to speak on this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come to the microphone if you're in the chambers. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this is a special use permit for a short-term rental in a fourplex. This is non-owner occupied. This is in the Rosedale Area Plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition, and there are no notices of violation on the property. Staff recommends approval for one year with conditions, including a maximum of six people on site and two cars off-street per unit. We have conditions of approval, including enhanced landscape, and we're asking them to plant a couple of trees as well.
Any questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Easterwood?
No, sir, I'm sorry.
Any questions for Director Hand?
Yeah, I've got one.
Commissioner Straws?
Yeah, sorry, I don't know if you see my hand there. Just for, just for clarification purposes, I know you just used the language duplex on Sixth Street and not to go back to that because I wasn't here for that vote and apologize for that, but duplex, one can be short and one has to be long. In fourplex, we can go up to two. I just, we've had a situation where we've had a duplex and they couldn't both be short-term rentals. So I'm trying to make sure that we are using the same language because I think that's kind of what Mark is saying. We've denied on a duplex, I know this is a fourplex, but just so that we're clear across the board going forward, I want to be, make sure I'm clear as well.
I will have to get you guys the code section again and send it to you so we can all reread it again. We do have a review, an annual review that's coming up in May. That was a part of the original approval of the short-term rental ordinance where we're gonna look at, and staff will recommend changes based on things we've learned in the first year of a short-term rental ordinance. I'm not recalling a duplex that we denied. In fact, I'm thinking of another duplex out off of Parallel Parkway that has been approved.
Well, remember, we keep calling this a duplex, but this is a four-unit complex. This is a fourplex.
Correct, but the que- question was about duplexes.
Right.
Mr. Straws.
But I, I think we're confusing everybody by talking about duplexes, because we're not, we don't have a duplex here.
No, and I apologize for the confusion. I just know that somebody referenced the Sixth Street, and then we brought in the conversation of a duplex because it was a duplex.
I think we're getting off.
Yeah.
Point. We have a fourplex here that we're we're using two units for a special use permit.
Yeah.
Right?
The matter hand is a fourplex. It allows up to two short-term rentals. If you look at the broader ordinance, I will send it to everybody for clarification.
Okay. Gotcha. But everybody's aware of what we're doing. We have a fourplex, and we're converting two of those units to short-term rentals, which is allowed per the code. Other questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the petitioner's request, subject to staff stipulations and comments inclusive of those reiterated by Director Hand.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing, do you have one? Sorry. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Or, I'm sorry, Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Mm-hmm.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mohler?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash one oh nine for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Those will be heard once again on March twenty-eighth at seven P M. before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash one one nine Houston Defoe with Blue Palm LLC. Special use permit for a short-term rental at two oh four Orchard Street in the upstairs portion of the building. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated March eleven, two thousand twenty-four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, is the applicant. I believe I've got you queued up, ready to speak. I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones, did you have a question?
Well, a comment. Uh, I know Gunner is unavailable right now, but we have the wrong case that's being shared, and so that might be confusing to those online, because we're on one one nine.
There we go.
Okay, thank you.
Not yet. There we go. Okay, is the applicant? I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please start off with your name, who's gonna be speaking to us tonight, and, uh, tell us about your project.
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Y- yes.
This is Houston Defoe, uh, seventeen hundred Northeast sixty-eight Terrace, Gladstone, Missouri, six four one one eight. Representing, uh, Blue Palm, which is also the T E Lounge on the first floor of two oh four Orchard Street. We are applying to, um, get a special use permit to make our long-term rental, which is our second floor of our building, a short-term rental. And that's pretty much it. Nothing real special, no big changes to the property, just converting long-term rental to short-term.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come to the microphone if you're in the chambers. Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director Planter resign. Again, this is a special use permit for a short-term rental. Um, as the applicant noted above, the, uh, drinking establishment of which the special use permit was approved by this commission and the Board of Commissioners last month. This is, excuse me, in the central area plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are some older notices of violation that have all been, um, rectified uh, for this property. Staff does recommend approval, uh, of the special use permit for one year with conditions. We'd ask, there was a typo in the staff report. It says a maximum of six people and two cars off-street. There's not enough room to car- park cars off-street. You can kinda see the parking spot right there in this picture. There's only one space, um, so we'd ask by motion that that be changed to, that condition be changed to six people off what at one time, one car off-street. Uh, we're also asking for a, uh, trash enclosure at this property for them to maintain the brick sidewalk, some enhanced landscaping, and just like we did for the special use permit for the drinking establishment, we are asking them to come back for a master plan amendment to mixed use, as this has kind of always been a mixed-use project, so it's, um, to get it all buttoned up from a paperwork standpoint. We've asked for that now twice, so.
All right.
With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the petitioner's request, um, for one year, and that would correct the typo. It needs to be six people, one car off-street, subject to other staff stipulations and comments.
All right, thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones with the added stipulations in her motion. Is that a second, Commissioner, uh, Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mohler?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-three dash one nineteen for one year sub- with subject to the revised conditions, passes nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on March twenty-eighth at seven P M. before the Board of Commissioners in this room, and we'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go to our vacation application, which is V A C twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one, Daryl K. Rokowski. Vacation of utilities meant on lot one of Villas at Piper Valley at one one four seven one Webster Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated March eleven, two thousand twenty-four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
I have Cor- I have Corey R. with her hand up. I'm assuming you're representing the applicant. Would you go ahead and please give us your name and address, please?
Uh, yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Daryl Rokowski. I'm at one two five two five Leavenworth Road, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero nine. I'm actually, I'm I'm representing Daryl Rokowski. Uh, Corey, I guess, is her email on this Zoom. That's my wife.
Okay, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Daryl.
You are, you're Daryl, and you're representing Daryl?
Yes.
Are there two Darrels?
No, 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 no.
Yourself?
I'm representing myself.
There you go. Thank you. All right, go ahead now.
Uh, we're looking to vacate three feet of, uh, property one one four seven one Webster Avenue on the west end of the house um, to fit it properly.
Okay. Can you just have a utility easement that you're wanting to to take care of so you can build on the lot?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, yeah, the old utilities run across the front of the house.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Come to the microphone or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director Planter resign. As the applicant notices, noted this is a vaca- a utility easement vacation. This is in the, um, Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. Staff receive no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There are no notices of violation. Um, staff does recommend approval. Just real quick note here, um, this was perhaps missed by the applicant during original subdivision, because this did go through a subdivision phase, and this easement was there. Because the property abuts a common tract to the west, typically, and you can kinda see it in this drawing here, we typically get a utility easement of five feet or ten feet if it doesn't have a shared space. So one of the conditions of approval is that there western most you, western property on utility easement will essentially be a full ten feet, whereas most subdivisions only have five feet, because when they match up to the next property adjacent, it adds up to ten, so.
Right.
Um, and common tracks don't carry utility easements, so just a small clarification, that is one of the conditions of approval for them to, um, get back and record that and, uh, questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the petitioner's request for the vacation easement, subject to staff stipulations and comments, including the notation that Director Hand made about it needing to be a full ten feet versus five feet.
Thank you. Uh, motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones with the stipulations added by Director Hand in his comments. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones? Miller?
Aye.
Mohler?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of vacation twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one subject to the revised conditions, passes nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on March twenty-eighth at seven P M.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is Platte twenty twenty-three dash zero three eight, Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consultants, preliminary and final Platte to create three agricultural lots at ten thousand Hollingsworth Road. Mr. Chairman, the appeal was heard earlier this evening and held over, and at that time, they also requested that the Platte be held over.
Thank you, and I don't believe the applicant is still with us.
No, we told them that they did not need to stay for the Planning Commission meeting.
All right, thank you, and I would just wanna go to the public. Was anyone here tonight to speak in favor or in opposition to this case? Please come to the microphone or raise your hand if you're online. All right, seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand. Are you okay with the application, applicant's request for holdover?
Gunner Hand, Director Planter resign. Staff is agreeable with the holdover request.
Thank you, then I will accept a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the petitioner's request for a holdover for thirty days.
Thank you. Motion for holdover made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mohler?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over Platte twenty twenty-three dash zero three eight until the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four meeting, as requested by the applicant, passes nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you.
Our next application is Platte twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four, Joe McLaughlin with B H C Roads. Preliminary Platte to combine multiple lots into one commercial lot at eleven oh one North Seventh Street, six hundred six twelve, six twenty-four, six thirty-two, and six forty-five State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated March eleven, two thousand twenty-four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. McLaughlin, I have you queued up, ready to speak. If you'd go ahead, please start off with your name and address.
Yes, uh, my name is Joe McLaughlin. I am with B H C, seven twelve State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero one.
And what would you like to do?
All right, we are, uh, we are proposing to, uh, take the property there and plaid it into, uh, one lot. It's currently multiple lots, and this is to support, um, PR twenty twenty-three dash zero four four and N P L two zero two three dash zero two zero. Um, there's gonna be several improvements to the site, including buildings and parking lots.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director Planter resign. Again, we have a plat for the new, uh, Kansas City, Kansas Community College Downtown Campus. This is in the downtown area plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There are some notices, older notices of violation on the this property when they were all, uh, as they have been all vacant for quite some time, uh, except for the Will Gill Center on that, on that block in whole. Stephen does recommend approval. We would make note that the Platte does remove the historic alleyway in the urban core, um, in a, in a, in an old urban core block.
Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Easterwood? You're muted, Commissioner Easterwood.
Oh, sorry. Uh, so Gunner, just for clarification, it it that does go from State Avenue all the way over to uh, Nebraska, correct?
Gunner, there's a point to resign. That is correct. What would be left would be the one parcel for the Community College and one parcel for Will Gill.
Okay.
Other questions for Director Hand? If not, I will take a motion when ready. Commissioner Easterwood?
Uh, yes, I make, uh, motion for approval of, uh, Platte twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner Easterwood. Is that a second, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Mm-hmm.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mohler?
Aye.
Schwartz? Schwartz.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve plat twenty twenty four dash zero, zero, four, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have two items that we are going to hear together and then we will vote on them separately. Plan review application, P R twenty twenty four dash zero, zero, three, Curtis and Curtis Peterson. Preliminary development plan to construct a one hundred and seventy-four unit garden apartment complex at thirteen hundred North Fifty-Ninth Street. And the corresponding master plan amendment, N P L twenty twenty four dash zero, zero, one. Master plan amendment from medium density residential to high density residential planned K C K comprehensive plan. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated March eleventh, twenty twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The publication in the echo for the master plan amendment and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Kurt Peterson, nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Kansas City, Missouri, here on behalf of the applicant, the developer, Marion Development Group. Shelby Miles has traveled here, is with me with the developer, as well as our civil engineer Tyler Wyson. So we brought a previous version of this plan uh, to you back in December. Which planning commission supported a little bit of context before we get to the changes, just because that's been a few little, a few days.
Sure.
Since we're here. One is this is approximately a forty-five million dollar multifamily project, very high quality. It is on land that is already zoned. It has been zoned appropriately, R P five since nineteen eighty-four. It isn't a spot that we think, and we think most everyone, uh, certainly planning professionals would agree, is perfect for this sort of, we call it transitional use. What I mean is we have some single family to the east, we have some single family to the north. But then we are a buffer property, I'd call it our transition property to the mobile home park. That is dense and to our west, and then the commercial that lines State Avenue that is to our south. So again, we kind of stepped down if if you know what I mean, and usually we use multifamily. Also, it's important to note, I think, and the staff report certainly says this again and again, that the master plan's goal of having more residential density along State Avenue, particularly. Where there's access to public transit, bus services is important in the comp plan and the master plan. And that's exactly what we're doing here. I'm going to expound on that in a minute in terms of that access. And then lastly, I'd point out, this isn't always the case. It's hard earned, but huh, usually. Staff supported this project when we came before you in December and staff supports this project you saw in the staff report uh, tonight. So with that, back to December, after we received this body's recommendation to the full commission. We went to the county commissioners in January and the project was denied. The project was denied largely based on public infrastructure issues. So we went back to the drawing board. There was too much good here, in our opinion, too much time and money and just. Good components, good ingredients for this project to work here, but we heard what the commissioner said. So we went and worked on those infrastructure issues. So there's three primary ways that we add address those and those I want to present to you right now. So you have a good sense for how this project differs from what you saw in December. The first is an expansion of fifty ninth street and and. Gunner, if you if you want to, if you want to put an image up that an aerial, what have you, just something for context. Thank you very much. So fifty ninth street is the north, south street coming off of State Avenue, right? As you head north from State Avenue and we're on the west side. And so what you can see there is our site plan, which is again on the west side of fifty ninth street. That's important. The commercial properties I described are immediately south of us. The mobile home park you can see faintly to your west there. And then we have some single family homes on the east side of the street, fifty ninth street. And then single family to the north and you're coming downhill. That's the famous hill that's been much talked about fifty ninth street coming downhill to State Avenue. So fifty ninth street right now is approximately seventeen to eighteen foot wide in front of our property, that that a whole extent of fifty ninth street. That's about eight hundred feet that you can see on the screen there. It again is seventeen to eighteen foot wide. So we are, as part of our improvements, now going to add five foot of width with curb and gutter to fifty ninth street on our side, on the west side. So that will also include a stormwater inlet, which will take all the water that runs down the street there into a stormwater inlet on our side, on the west side of the street. And take it to the detention that we have on our property. That will take care of some existing problems of backing up water. If you've seen pictures or driven over there at the low point, that will not happen anymore. And frankly, water to the residential to the east that backs up, this takes care of that backing up onto their property. So it's a big improvement to pull the water off the street with curb and gutter and the stormwater inlet. This will take a nine foot lane width, again, back to let's call it eighteen foot. It varies a little bit. That's about nine, nine feet and nine feet of lane width on each side. It takes it to the standard prescribed lane width on our side. By adding three foot of actual lane before you get to curb and gutter on our side. So you have twelve foot of lane on our side. This will allow ample passing width even for, there was a commissioner at Board of County Commissioners Commissioner. That said, I want to see that a fire truck, which is about eight to ten feet and a garbage truck can get by each other. So that's eight to ten feet. And then a garbage truck is about eight and a half feet. Do the math. We have now provided enough width that those, if they. Pass each other there, uh, they could get by each other safely with some extra room. So generally, to remind you, not repeating my entire presentation from December, south of our property down to State Avenue, you generally have width for that roadway that's sufficient. North of us, it's the same problem we have right in front of our property. But we, the issue is north of our property, even though it's still narrow, as the traffic study that we submitted and the staff reviewed and approved said. Uh, there's very few apartment residents that will be heading north on fifty ninth. It's also kind of intuitive, but again, this. The study says there's just not reasons when you look at the overall street system that a large number of people would go north. Why do I say all that? Because. Expanding fifty ninth street to this to on along our property and water and width and all that, knowing that there's already sufficient width to the south, all the way to State Avenue. You've taken care of any sort of residents that will use fifty ninth street to speak of, right? There'll be a occasional person that would go north. And that's why that improvement that we're proposing matches, you know, the project that we're putting forth. That was the first of three improvements. The second is a sidewalk system. So right now, you recall, there's no sidewalk along fifty ninth street. And it's everybody's goal, our goal, staff's goal, cop plan, Board of County Commissioners' goal, to be able to circulate pedestrians down to State Avenue. So providing a safe sidewalk to get that done is very important to us. No sidewalk exists on fifty ninth because as we found out even after that planning issue, you remember, we spent a lot of time on this point. We went and looked at the right away. It is not sufficient. And when the U G contacted our property owner just to the south, the commercial property owner. And ask about getting some right away so we can fit a sidewalk in. The answer was no. So we went to the drawing board. So what we're proposing is we've worked out an agreement with the mobile home park. Who has a north, south spine, a street, a private street, actually, that heads down to State Avenue. But is immediately abuts our property and there's safe way to get a sidewalk down to it. They're allowing us to build a proper sidewalk all the way down to fifty, to down fifty ninth place. To State Avenue where the bus stop is right there at that intersection. So our residents, frankly, if anybody from the neighborhood wanted to walk through our property. And then anybody at the mobile home park will all benefit from now having a safe way to get down uh, to State Avenue, whether it's to the bug bus stop or just to walk along State Avenue. So safe pedestrian circulation check. That was another major item of infrastructure that was missing from our previous project. Third and final is the idea of traffic calming. Every resident we've talked to in our previous, most recent neighborhood meeting or the one we had months ago. Everybody says there's a major speeding problem with people coming down the hill southbound on fifty ninth street. That problem exists today, just to state the obvious, has nothing to do directly with our with our project. It's an existing condition. However. Developer wants to help with that. We want to mitigate that problem both selfishly, because we want our people to be safe there, but also just to help the neighborhood. So we had a neighborhood meeting within the last several weeks. Um, I know the two women that were there um, are sitting right here and I will say, I hope they'd agree. It's actually great. I they're they're not going to support the project as as they probably will say, but it was a great conversation. We talked for. At least an hour or more and we spent a lot of time on this issue. How can we do traffic calming? How can we help contribute to traffic calming to help people not fly down that hill? And we tossed out ideas like speed monitoring signs, flashes at you, you're going too fast. This is how fast you're going, red and light, red and blue lights, all those sorts of things. Road humps or road bumps or both of those or anything else somebody could think of. And while there was no definitive answer, I know it was the dialogue was appreciated and we asked, come back with feedback from your other neighbors if any of those things are especially appealing over others. Our intention is, as we move forward with this project to the Board of County Commissioners and our development agreement. That will happen with IRBs and it's it's not relevant, but it is for this reason. We are going to say to the Board of County Commissioners, we want to put some money aside. To sized in a way that would help do road humps, road bumps uh, at the top, as well as one of those signs. The neighborhood can decide with the U G how to use that money, but at least we'll put the money there to legitimately sincerely help with this existing condition. Stipulations is where I'd like to end. And again, I hope you'll ask me questions. I'm trying not to be entirely repetitive on purpose for December, but please, if you have any questions about the details, ask me. So stipulations, we accept stipulations two, five through fourteen and sixteen to twenty-seven. And I'm going to go slowly on the four now I'd like to talk about, please. We'd like to discuss with Mr. Chairman, with you and the Commissioners, number one. Number three. Number four, number fifteen, one, three, four and fifteen. With number one, it says this in paraphrase. Please put curb and gutter on the east side of fifty ninth. Remember, we're on the west side, but curb and gutter on the east side of fifty ninth and run that all the way down to State Avenue. And then put curb and gutter on the west side at the southern end of our project, because we are doing our west side, right? Eight hundred feet, but start up again at the southern end of your property and head down to the first drive of that commercial drive to your south. We would ask that you delete this stipulation number one. This concept has not been mentioned in any of our conversation with staff or with anybody else. We're absolutely surprised by this in the staff report. Um, there's no real impact by doing this. Uh. By comparison, our eight hundred feet of curb and gutter with storm sewer takes care of a drainage problem. And it expands the road, as I already talked about. So with all the concessions we've made and we've made a lot since the beginning, we're proud of it. Listening to everybody, including staff, this is not something we can do. It's substantial. We've never studied it. Um, and the road has sufficient width south of our property. And actually, just by putting curb and gutter there, you really don't. You don't really add anything that's meaningful. And so we'd ask that you delete that stipulation number one. Stipulation number three, we would ask that you modify. It says, please put a six foot privacy fence along your north and your south property line. Starting in the north, you'll remember we have a a single family property to our north. And we have, I don't know if you if you can go to any sort of aerial gunner, if you don't mind while I'm talking about it. We have a tree preservation area that dominates the entire northwest corner. Gunner's calling it out right there. That whole northwest corner will be preserved. Um, and you'll see, we're going to agree to a step in a minute to put an easement on that even. And so east of that point, it's okay. East of the tree preservation along the north property line, we will agree to a six foot fence. We've been talking a lot with staff about it. We don't know that it's necessarily that effective. But we will agree to that stipulation. So we'd ask um, the record reflect that part of stipulation three, we would agree with. The part we'd ask you to delete is the request for a fence and was I clear about modifying it? So it starts with the tree preservation area and heads east. So we're not blowing through a bunch of trees. But the south side fence would be between us and the commercial property to the south. And we can go into more detail if you want. First of all, it has for security, has its own uh, chain link fence that's already there. But in terms of putting a six foot fence, we have a three story product. In the south there, up against that industrial or commercial property, and they're generally generally at the same grade. It's a little higher up where we are. A six foot privacy fence literally will do nothing. There's already a chain link fence. There's no way to screen that visually from the industrial. We're okay with that from our end and there's really nothing we can do about it. So the idea of putting a fence on the south property line literally would have no effect. And we'd ask that you wouldn't have us waste those resources. So that was a modification, as I said, to stipulation three. Stipulation four, we'd ask for just a quick clarification. So the open space easement, that that sorry, staff requested in stipulation four, that there'd be an open space easement to preserve the existing tree stand and grades. We agree with this concept, but for the record, and I'm hopefully Gunner will nod here. We, we want to clarify that it's back to, that's actually a good picture right there. The tree preservation area up is white with the label on it in the northwest corner. We absolutely agree we'll enter into an easement so that that can be of record um, and 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 preserved, but that is the only tree preservation area. So let the record reflect, it's on the screen right now in the northwest corner as labeled on that sheet L one. That would be the clarification request, the stipulation for. The final is stipulation fifteen. This is, this is an oldie but goodie, uh, as every project that I've ever had for any sort of residential has had this proposed stipulation. And we've always modified it as follows. The stipulation is all downspouts on the buildings will be internalized. And that is not required by the multifamily guidelines. Um, simply a staff request. Our our modification request as always is that downspouts will be located at the corners where possible to make them less conspicuous. And we'll paint them to match the building. So overall, Chairman, we're back with a revised plan. Few months later, we've listened to the full commission. We'll be up there shortly, talk to them about this. But we'd hope that you'd find that this is the plan you supported before, but better. It's really tried to take in a real monetary and physical way, infrastructure needs into account and to come with real solutions. So uh, a- a- at the end of the day, this is meant to be attainable multifamily housing of the highest quality. With people paying rent somewhere in the range of eight hundred to sixteen hundred dollars. And so adding things like curbs down to State Avenue that have no, you know, no impact, no effect that we're just learning about. Or a fence that has no impact to the south as compared to other things we've agreed to. That's the context where we ask you to carefully examine. Our requests in the plan, and I hope you'll ask me questions if you have any. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Questions from the commission on the revised plans? Mr. Beth?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh. What would make you think traffic on northbound fifty ninth would be? Not significant when you have a hundred and seventy some units. I'm assuming some of those are going to have kids going to school. And would they not go to Slagel?
They could, they could. Significant mean the the traffic study said, I think, ten percent and this is subjective, so ten percent distribution.
I've seen the traffic studies before. Uh, so would would that be a school bus or do they walk from there? Do you know?
Usually, when you get farther along in a project, you talk to the school district, you know, about how they're going to route that. I haven't done that.
I don't know where the bus, well, my my concern is also if if uh, that should be addressed with. You said that's the road doesn't need to be enhanced, then it can be narrow because there's not significant traffic. But it doesn't matter what the school does. If the fact is, there's going to be kids going that direction, whether it's on buses or walking, so. The the enhancement in front of your property is really nice, but then you're funneling down. Uh, southbound and northbound back to a narrow road with little amenities in it and little curbs. Sidewalks and so forth. I think northbound with a sidewalk is probably as important as southbound. I've been down that street when kids are walking home from school. And there, there's a significant amount of kids that travel that way, pedestrian traffic right now. And so I think that's something that needs to be considered and I wouldn't discount the northbound fifty ninth street traffic. And that it's going to be any less than the southbound.
Yeah, I mean, I think it will be insignificant, it it, but there'll be some people and I I I would wonder too, you know, I'm not asking you a question because that's not what we do, but just out loud. The school bus assumedly is already going on that street and picking up kids. So I'd be curious to investigate how they're doing it now and if there are issues and. And how are kids, are kids walking down to State Avenue and over right now when they're, I don't know. I I mean, it's a it's a good question.
Walk down Meadowlark Lane.
Come down.
Yeah.
Fifty ninth.
And and I believe that's, I don't, I'm not even sure that's a bus service there by the number of the kids and the proximity to the school there. I'm sure the elementary school has bus service somewhere in there, but the bus goes down Meadowlark Lane where most of the kids. Travel and most of the access to the single family homes there.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay, for now, I think we're good.
Thank you, Chairman.
So we'll go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Anyone want to speak to this case in favor? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Anyone opposed? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. We'll go ahead and talk to the microphone first. Thank you.
Gene Holland, thirteen, twenty-five North Fifty-Ninth Street. Uh, some of my questions have already been answered, but um, I do have one question. Um, legal counsel was said at the initial planning meeting back in the. Legal counsel was said at the initial planning meeting back in November and again at the Commissioners' meeting in December, if their plan didn't pass, that they were going to walk away. So my question is, why are we here again? My understanding that they were not interested in making any changes. And now we have some minor changes. It was my understanding that this development was unanimously voted down, were last brought before the Commissioners due at least in part to fifty ninth street, not being able to support the development. And also to the scale and type of the complex not fitting into the neighborhood. We've already discussed a little bit about the eight hundred feet on the west side being an improvement, but as you had already stated, that's just not going to help the rest of fifty ninth street. There's still traffic going up and down. There's Freeman and Richmond streets to the north end of fifty ninth street. And people come turn out out of those complexes and go down the hill to State Avenue. I know I'm on the south end of some of my neighbors on the south end. We do go up the street to get to parallel and a lot of people will do that because parallel is a lot quieter street. And people going to the legends or other places might choose to avoid the traffic on state and use parallel. Supposedly the complex is keeping with the city master plan for growth along the State Avenue corridor. Yet the master plan also supports maintaining authentic neighborhoods. So the question is, which carries more weight? We keep hearing forty five million dollars. That is nice for the greater city maybe, but for the people on fifty ninth street that pay taxes that have been there for many years, I've been there for sixty plus years. It feels like we're getting slighted because trying to keep our authentic neighborhood might be getting pushed aside just for the money. And there are also new neighbors who have moved in in the past five or six years for our rustic rural setting. And then to have a huge complex come aboard is just not what they were looking for. And I'll, I'll also just address again, like you had said, people do go up and down fifty ninth street regardless of what the traffic study says. I go up north fifty ninth street when I have business that direction into parallel. I see people from Freeman and Richmond, Richmond, which are the two roads closest to Meadowlark. People still turn out of their, out of Richmond and Freeman and go down the hill south to get to State Avenue. So to have eight hundred feet of improvement in front of just the complex itself, it's not going to address all the traffic that goes both ways. That's my comments.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we get his address for the record, please?
Thirteen twenty five North fifty ninth Street.
Thank you. Yes, anyone who wants to speak, I need name and address first. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Betsy Rivas. My address is twelve forty one North fifty ninth Street.
Thank you.
Last time this was discussed, several of you share your observations and reservations on the then a hundred and eighty two unit development. It is alarming to me that their best compromise is so marginal, only eight units less, some speed bumps and a potential sidewalk and not on fifty ninth street. I worry that even while this is their first development and they're investing forty five million, they are so unwilling to listen to all of you and the community. I agree with Mr. Curtis that they have invested a lot of money and it's clear with them going back to the board that it's all about profits. Maximum units allowed in medium dense residential designation is twelve units. And this is for over twenty units per acre. Please just take a moment to imagine how this would affect you, your homes and your streets. Now imagine this being a street where there's no public lights and there are no sidewalks. The proposed speed bumps while slowing down traffic in the immediate area that are planned, do not address the lack of visibility due to the rice or the hill up the street or how narrow it is. In contrast, they might create a bottleneck and block the flow of larger emergency vehicles further when it snows currently or there is black ice. There is an unspoken rule to give the right of way to each vehicle one at a time, and these speed bumps will increase the difficulty of navigating the street in those conditions. Our street is cherished for its country charm, a close knit atmosphere, as you can see. The development of this size will alter the character of our community. The homeowners that reside on the street are the type of people Marion Group has mentioned once to attract. And with this development, we know that a large complex with limited parking, it's not as appealing nor aspirational as they might want to believe. We are highly involved in the community. Several of us are volunteers, have served our country through military service and or have worked directly with community youth. And this complex would make several of us reevaluate if we want to remain in our current homes. It was also said, and I think it's a bit misleading about the access to the bus, bus stations. Yes, there is one close in the direction towards Lowe's. However, the one towards downtown is not as accessible. You would have to cross state. And right now that is a bit difficult to do if you, unless you get to North fifty seven. And the conditions of the bus stops are also not ideal. We urge you to please take all of this into consideration. There are many lives that are going to be affected. And we do believe that, you know, it should be the welfare of the community above profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, how many, how many people are going to speak? Because you guys are going real slow and I'm going to close the public comment unfortunately by mistake. So how many else? Who else is going to speak? Got one more? Okay, no problem. I just want to make sure I got my numbers right. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
All right. I'm Zachary Harrison. I reside at fourteen twenty five North fifty ninth Street. I too was under the impression that the last time we came up here would be the last time we'd have to come up here. It was told to us that if they didn't get their way that time, that they were not going to do it. They're not going to receive more things. But here we are, waiting calmly for an hour or two. I don't know what it was. It felt like two, but you know, talked about being vested, how they wanted to invest. I hear forty five million, forty five million. Yeah, it sounds like a lot of money. We've been invested in this community. It's not just a street in the community for a long time there on North fifty ninth Street. Neighbors to the south of me have been my neighbors since I can remember. My grandfather had the house before us. We purchased it from them. So we vested back into the community. The neighbors further down the street, down to the south of us are directly across from what this would be. You know, and it's a large area. I don't recall how many acres it said that it was going to pave over and how many trees it was going to knock down. But I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Wyandotte County area. It's not known for its fox. It's not known for its deer and it's not known for its raccoons. But we have all kinds of those over there and this is going to have a huge environmental impact on them as well. I have cameras outside my home that record a lot of people wa- walking up and down the street that also drive up and down our street. Schlegel students that are in that area do walk to school. You know, cars fly down that street and I know it's not his fault. But they do fly down that street and that is very, it's already a very sketchy situation. Now you're going to add possibly a hundred and seventy plus people that may be walking up that street to go to Schlegel or be riding buses that are going to maybe be impacted by vehicles driving down that street. That speed bump isn't going to stop somebody at seventy mile an hour flying down that street on a blind side. The bottom of that street, no matter how many times I've lived there, you know, outside of being here, I've only been in the military outside of Kansas. That bottom of that street is never drained properly. I don't think it's going to drain properly, you know, if I govern a Wyandotte couldn't fix it, you know, and I don't think that the, the group is saying that they're going to, you know, add drains and stuff like that. There is going to fix it. It's a, it's a bottleneck much bigger than what we can figure out. So covering up a large mass of area like Schlegel did in behind my house when they built that stadium, they purchased an extra large area in order to have runoff in order to do all of that. So I wonder how much runoff that they're required to have as Schlegel was required to have like three acres of runoff in order to absorb all the water that's not going to no longer go into the earth. But like I said, North fifty ninth Street may be just a street to somebody that's from Missouri, that it isn't their street and it's not their side of the neighborhood. North fifty ninth might just be a street. If you're, if you're working for somebody that's not in state, if you're from Kentucky and you're just throwing money at a place trying to, you know, throw a hundred and seventy four apartments there. This is our community. This is where our families are going to be raised. This is where a lot of these people have been raised. Where, you know, I'm born in Providence, went to Limber, went to Schlegel, went to a well born Coronado Hills where Coronado been Dallas Gloria Ellis. You know, I'm vested, you know, I, you know, taught the school all kinds of different things and I'd hate to have to pick up and leave because we now have multiple, even more cars coming up and down our street. You know, we didn't, we got the area there because we wanted to be in an area that was kind of country and not, you know, a tremendous amount of apartments. Otherwise we would have moved off to fifty fifth, direct across the street from those guys. You know, so I don't know. I, I hope you guys take that all into consideration. I appreciate the last time I was in front of you guys. And that's all I got.
Just, just, I just have one question for you. What's the distance from the Schlegel property to yours when it was built? How close? You said it abutted your property?
So we, I think we had the largest amount of property on that street, which is about nine acres. They were about three acres from us and they had to buy all the way up to the creek in order to have runoff on the east side of our property. So they bought that in order to make the Schlegel Stadium.
Are you able to see that stadium from your property?
Yeah. And they rock at it if I wanted to.
Okay.
I don't want to, but.
Right. You're curious. All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
We're good. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Nick Rodina, twelve oh four North fifty ninth Street. I have the, the commercial property there. And I think one of the biggest issues I'm going to speak of real quick, because this needs to get out of the way, is that we were not given correct notice for this project at all. We were only given a twelve day notice when fourteen days is required. Furthermore, I never received one letter about the meeting at Schlegel or the meeting tonight. I've not received one bit of information on this project. I have no plans to look at. All I've gotten is the information from my good neighbors that were able to send it to me and keep me in the loop. So that being said, the commission last time members agreed the last meeting that the road was too narrow. We've already talked about that. That's a blind hill that's heading south, no, no, sorry, heading south down fifty ninth. And when you come over that hill, that's exactly where the entrance for this place is going to be. The children right now, you asked about the buses, they walk up that hill to get to the bus to go to Schlegel. From what I've seen. And you know, I, it's just, it's not going to work. So I just want to know what's changed so greatly this time. I mean, yeah, sidewalk and, and as far as I know, we've spoken to the, the lady that owns the trailer park and she doesn't know anything about the sidewalk coming down to her, toward her property either. So this, this new residential or this new proposal moves the residential buildings actually closer to my property, which I tried to say last time and didn't get a chance to speak. All of my equipment has the backup alarms. We start work there. We load trucks in the mornings. A six foot privacy fence, like you said, is probably not going to do it. It probably needs to be more like sixteen feet. It's going to be a constant noise. We've been there. We're zoned to be there. We're not a nuisance. I've tried to clean up my property and make it look nice for the neighborhood. I've tried to improve this, the fences and, and keep things nice around there. But you know, basically, I, I just don't think it's a good idea. So so a company from Kentucky is coming to Kansas City to build apartments and they'll be, will they be hiring local contractors to do this? Or are we just bringing people from Kentucky or what's the plan for that? You know, they're just bringing all this out of state money in, not helping our community in that way at all. I pay taxes on four properties in Wyandotte County. Born and raised here, third generation. And all my entire family pays taxes in Wyandotte County. So I would hope that we have a little bit of say and some kind of some kind of weight on the thoughts and what happens in this town. What I need is some times to read, I need some time to review this new plan. I need to have an engineer look at what the impact on, of this is going to be for me. And you know, as far as, as far as this new, new residence right up to the back of me, I'm asking for a one month continuance. So I have enough time to, to look into these few things and for the neighbors to find, to, to digest some of this and look at this new, new plan. This feels like it's just been railroaded and, and we don't appreciate it. So you know, the mayor and the city commission members all agree that these are type of apartment complexes are not wanted in Wyandotte County. We need single family homes, put six to eight houses in there and remodify the street and let's do something the right way. That's what nurses and upcoming firemen and things of that nature, those are the things that, that people want in this town. They don't want more apartment complexes. So and I guess that's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to go online to Miguel. Miguel, please unmute yourself, please, and give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Miguel Madrigal. And we are living on fourteen oh nine North fifty ninth Street. We are the single family, not of the property. And my, my neighbors already speak up for me because they already said everything. And we all agree, then this is not a good place to build the apartments. And that's all I want to say that I am not. I disagree with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now go to Jay.
Hello, my name is Jessie Villarreal. I live at forty forty five North sixty seventh here in Kansas City, Kansas. I want to start just by saying that, you know, this is a problem I have in so many of these meetings, including issues that I've been directly involved with, that these things are always skewed in the favor of the developers. I mean, why is this being heard again, first of all? Is this what we do? Just because Gunner doesn't get his way? I, I'm just, I don't know. I kind of like to know too, when you've got neighbors up there speaking and referencing certain streets and certain directions.
First of all, ma'am, this was referred back to us by the Board of Commissioners. This wasn't staff directed back to us. So if we could leave any kind of personal things out of it, that would be great.
Okay, sorry, just working on the test experience. Yeah.
I can remove you from the meeting or you can stick to talking about the project.
All right, I'll stick to the project. Can I, can I go or is this taking out of my time allotted?
I'm going to ask you to go, but I'm going to ask you to refrain from those comments or I'm going to remove you.
I heard you the first time. Okay. So where are the maps when you have a neighbor up there speaking in reference to directions and streets? It's, it's made very easily accessible and visual when the developer is speaking, but not when the taxpayers are speaking. This project was changed marginally at best, reduced by six or eight units, added a little sidewalk. This traffic calming measures thing seems a little weird to me. I also want to talk about the fact that they had twelve days notice on this, which is not regulation. And in my personal experience, has happened multiple times when things are being heard again. Where are the neighbors and the community's rights to be notified before these meetings? So there's more than two people that are able to attend when this happens. I'd also like to read something from the citywide master plan because we're here, I guess, to hear about whether or not they're going to amend the master plan. So here's the, the master plan amendment process per the UG. The planning commissioners will review the master plan at least annually and may propose amendments to the plan. Second, the amendments proposed for a given year may be developed from suggestions by the Board of Commissioners, Planning Commission and City Staff. Landowners may propose amendments to their property's land use designation through a formal application. And C, and the most important one I see is a workshop will be held by city staff to review and solicit public feedback for all proposed amendments. public feedback for all proposed amendments. The meeting date, time, and location will be posted in the local paper at least two weeks in advance of that workshop. Where was that with this process for these folks?
Ma'am, could you keep your comments to this project? We can't, we can't change the entire zoning code tonight. I, I'm asking you to speak to this project, please.
I am speaking to this project, sir.
This project.
Yes, I'm saying that if they're doing a master plan amendment tonight, then these are what the UG says need to be done to amend the master plan. I don't know how much more relevant that can be. So, anyway, I don't really, I'm just here. I feel like I'm just being interrupted and this is kind of par for the course with how, with how the community is, is treated on these things. But this seems to me a way for Mr. planning and zoning staff, I'm sorry, planning.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and remove the speaker because she couldn't follow the instructions that were asked. So we're going to move on and we'll go to someone else. Okay, seeing that, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand. I'm sorry, we'll go back to the developer.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a clarification first though? The notices to the property owners for this meeting tonight that I did are dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. So once we put them in the mail, as you know, we can't control how fast the mail goes out, but that's when those notices are dated.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Peterson. So want to address some of the comments made by the neighbors. First of all, can you talk about the trailer park access agreement for the sidewalk?
Yes.
There's been, there, there was a discussion that, that the trailer park owner did not know anything about it. Can you address that?
Yeah, it's, that would not be accurate. We, I've both been involved and had people on my team and the client. There's been extensive discussions. There's an agreement that's out there. It's not signed yet, but it's enough that I wouldn't come before you and talk about an agreement. It's agreed in spirit. And I don't know who they're referring to, but I know that my team has been dealing with the person that holds it. It's an out-of-state owner. Uh, you wouldn't find them on the property. They're in another state. So I, I don't know what else to say, but other than that, I have firsthand knowledge that we absolutely have an agreement, not signed, but we have it literally drafted and agreed.
And it would be a requirement of.
It'd be a requirement. So I'd be shooting myself in the foot if I didn't think it would get done.
Can you talk also about um, density of the, the project?
Just so I don't go off on a tangent, Chairman, do you want to, anything you want to mean to?
Well, you were at, what were, what was your original project for? Hundred and eighty?
Yeah, it's a hundred and eighty and now it's at a hundred and seventy-four. I thought you were talking about the units per acre, which it's that.
Well, we could get into that too, because that was, that was brought up as well.
But that's answer your question, a hundred and eighty to a hundred and seventy-five.
Okay. And then accessibility to mass transit. So the sidewalk that you've got coming through the trailer park will take you up to State Avenue.
That's right.
And then how far away at that point will it be from the mass transit?
So I always get this reversed. I will ask staff to correct me really if I'm wrong, but I believe the bus stop that you will hit right when you get to State Avenue will take you, will take you west. And it is true that you need to cross the street to get to the east, but that's, I mean, that, we're doing the best we can. You, that's true with bus stops. When you have a divided road, you have to get to the other side to go to the other direction.
Okay. Um, let's see, density, um, drainage. So you brought up drainage. So as far as where the drainage inlet is going to be, is that going to be at the bottom of the hill? Is that?
This is actually one I'll say as I'm stalling, as Gunner pulls up an image because it's easier to see. But this is one I wanted to speak to. I'm happy to answer your questions, but this is so important and it's important that we talk about the details. So you can see the di- in the southeast corner of that site plan, you can see diagonal fine lines, right? That is the, and if you want to point to it, Gunner, for anybody on, online or what have you, that, that whole area and that shape there. What's above it is showing the pipe, that, that double dark line. And what happens is that goes in a culvert under the road as you go east. Right now, there's actually a culvert connected to a pipe that uh, Mr. Odean, again, that spoke owns the property just to the south there of that. And there's a pipe that goes to his property that's broken. This is our civil engineers crawling through the pipe and whatever they're doing. It's broken. And so what it does is when it, when the heavy waters come through, it goes west, southwest, right, under the road. It starts backing up because that's broken and it backs up onto the present property and it backs up to the neighbor's property to the east. And it backs up on that road. That's why water gets there. So what this pipe does is it properly picks up the water, gets to our detention there, right, holds it and slowly lets it go. You see how the double dark line goes west and it terminates at the western property line? That's because through an agreement with that mobile home park, that's kind of a regional detention. It makes its way that way after our detention. The point of all that, to show you the detail, it's engineered, it's been reviewed by public work, by staff, by engineering staff. And it solves an existing problem and certainly takes care of any water that we have. But when you come down to the bottom of that hill anymore, that will, that, all that mud that gets washed back in there because of improper stormwater gets solved by putting this inlet where you see that pipe hit the road in that location.
Okay. And then can you show, and Matt Gunner, you may have to show me on the map the proximity of the entrance, the first, I guess it'd be the, the furthest north entrance in to the development from the, from the hill. How far are we from the, the hill to the, the first entrance? The first northern entrance? Do we know approximately?
Director Planner Planner Design, I think the apex of the hill is about a hundred or so feet north of the property line. That entrance is about two fifty south. So you're looking at approximately four hundred feet.
Four hundred feet from the crest of the hill?
Thereabouts. It may be a little bit less depending on if I'm reading these elevations correctly. But yes, I think, I think the apex of the hill is north of the property line.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I have on my list. Is there anything else that you wanted to address? Okay. Any questions from the, for the developer based on the public comments on the commission?
Mr. Chair, Steph would, uh, request clarification on traffic calming. We heard a lot of conversations from the public about traffic calming. I wasn't sure if Mr. Um, Peterson and his clients were recommending.
I thought you were talking about putting some money aside to have, can you go ahead and make that clarification?
I can, and I will fully admit procedurally that it's a little bit of a procedural TMI. But again, we're all here and we're all talking about it, that we, when we're before the Board of County Commissioners, we will s- state that when we, if and when we get to a development agreement, that we would like to put money aside that's sized in a way that could handle things like a speed bump and a sign that says how fast you're going and flashes. So that's details to be worked out.
Or something else agreed upon by every, by all the party, all the interested parties.
Precisely.
All right.
If that is the case, staff would recommend that some general statement be added as a condition of approval to direct the development agreement to have that conversation. Now, we've done that before, if you remember it. The five oh five central project, it was basically figure out something to contribute to the intersection improvement, like the very general.
Of course, it would, it would have to have something to hold, to hold everybody to it.
Leave it to the development agreement of the Board of Commissioners to determine what that should be.
We would support that, Chair. That's, that's what we're saying.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Easterwood?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, in reference to some of the comments that were made uh, prior to my becoming a commissioner, uh, there was um, some statements made that the agreement was, or this project was supposed to be terminated previously.
I think there was some discussion and I'll just, there were some, there were some, it's my understanding based on public comment that there was some discussion at earlier meetings that if the project was denied, that the developer was not going to, was not interested in revising it. And I'm, it's my understanding that you are interested in revising it, otherwise you wouldn't be here tonight. Is that correct?
Right. We heard comments from the full commission. We went back and we refiled to address this. That's as clear as I can say it.
All right. I'm sorry. This is from Commissioner Easterwood, who was not on the commission in December, when the case was first. Commissioner Easterwood, did that clarify a little bit for you?
A little bit.
Okay, well, if, if you ponder it and I need to go further, come back to me, okay?
All right.
All right. Any other questions coming back to the applicant for, after testimony? Commissioner Beth?
I have a question. But uh, for clarification, did Janet say the letters were sent out the thirteenth?
Janet, can you clarify with those letters were sent out February thirteenth? That's what I have done is.
That is correct.
But a- according to the, the information in the packet, the meeting was held on February twenty-first.
Well, I'm talking.
But that's eight days.
Well, I'm talking about the notices for tonight's meeting. The applicant is.
I was at, I think the question was a notice to the, to the residents of.
And they're required to send those out in the mail ten days prior to their neighborhood meeting.
So when was that? Oh, so that was eleven days. Correct.
I would have to look and I will look in the file and see uh, what my copy of the letter is dated. I'll let you know.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for the developer as a result of the public testimony? All right. We're going to go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director Planner Planner Design. Again, in this case, this plan review twenty twenty-four zero zero three is being heard in conjunction with master plan amendment twenty twenty-four uh, zero zero one. This again is being uh, was refiled and uh, has its second hearing with uh, some adjustments. Again, it's now a hundred and seventy-four unit apartment building. This is in the plant KCK comprehensive plan area in the Midtown neighborhood. Staff received no letters of support. We did receive letters in opposition as well as note the opposition that the previous city planning commission and board commissioner hearings at the first iteration of this project. There are no notices of violation on the property. I think it's okay. I'll stop here and show you quickly the zoning map. Again, we're looking at Fifty-Ninth and State property is zoned currently RP five. That's why it does not need a change of zone. Uh, as the applicant noted, it's been zoned that way since nineteen eighty-four. Prior to nineteen eighty-four, it was zoned E. Nineteen eighty-four, there was a massive change to the zoning code to redefine the districts. An E district prior to nineteen eighty-four was for multifamily housing. Um, again, we're looking at a stronger node on the State Avenue corridor just to the east at Meadowlark and State. Zooming out just a little bit and showing the master plan uh, categories. All that pasture is mixed use. All of the area on Fifty-Ninth Street was for medium density residential, which is why you see the uh, duplex farther to the north. Um, duplex street farther to the north. Uh, this is an old map, so that corner lot used to be some sort of public facility. It's now a commercial building. Um, again, to the point of the larger thinking for the larger State Avenue corridor is to have dense mixed-use development along the corridor. Typically a transition from a mixed-use corridor or mixed-use typology down to a single-family typology is some level of stepping down from multifamily, perhaps multifamily to uh, duplexes or townhomes and then into single-family. There's all kinds of different transitions that can happen, but that's the general gist of it. I think globally, and the point was taken from the comments both last time and tonight. Um, there is plenty in all of the long-range plans, including the comprehensive plan that was updated last November about neighborhood character. What we have here is what happens when an area has never had an area plan. We have planning that's good, point, point uses that point us in one direction for a long time, zoning that's supported that for a long time. Uh, and when development shows up to do it, it seems out of context. From a timing standpoint, temporally, if you will, it is a bit of a leapfrog. Typically, we would want to see a dense mixed-use development happen on State Avenue first. Then this happened next and so on and so forth. I think one of the other issues that's important to consider here is this used to be the edge of town. Right? And now it's in the middle of our urban area. So it still retains that rustic neighborhood feel because there's been no development except for a little bit to the north and a little bit on Meadowlark and a lot, quite a bit actually on Meadowlark Lane. Um, but it hasn't arrived too much to at least never to this extent. So if we had the chance to do an area plan, um, in the comp plan, we did note that this is one of the excuse me, one of the target areas to do a comp plan, we would have had these conversations. It never would have resulted here. And so we're planning while we're reviewing plans. It's tough for staff is what I'm saying. Uh, but at the end of the day, principally, uh, staff does recommend approval with conditions. I'd like to point out just a couple of things um, about those conditions, including the multifamily design guidelines, which we've talked about in the past. Our recommendation based on previous comments when it came back to us was to um, extend the improvements to Fifty-Ninth Street down to State Avenue. Those are the ones that the applicant contested. That's condition number one. I'll leave that for you all to decide if it should be. I will make the point that we do believe it was a stronger nexus to improve Fifty-Ninth Estate when it included a sidewalk. But we tried that and the applicant came back with an alternative design, alternative solution um, that is amenable to staff. Um, but again, improving the length of the property is typically what we ask for when we're doing public improvements just at your frontage. We do feel like there is still a nexus here to do the improvements all the way down to State Avenue. Um, not necessarily up to Meadowlark Lane. Um, it's just a lot closer to State Avenue. We're trying to connect to State Avenue in a better way and um, we can talk about, or you can ask me questions more about if we want to change, remove, or keep that condition. But I think I'll leave that conversation to you all to decide. As it relates to the other conditions of approval noted by the applicant, we had um, the property owner to the south speak to us at uh, public comments tonight. So typically what happens is the code requires the commercial property to buffer itself or screen itself from adjacent residential properties, not the residential development to screen itself from a commercial property to the south. So um, the code also only allows for up to a six-foot fence in this zone category. So anything above that would need a variance. Um, I think that staff is amenable to change the north fence property line to maintain as much open space easement to preserve what would be left after the proposed development um, creates the site in preparation for set development um, to the eastern line. But for the southern property line, you heard it tonight. I think it, staff would recommend that we still stick with the southern fence as well. Um, even though it might only be six feet. Um, and then as it relates to the clarification for condition number four, we would just add the clarification language at the end that would say, as noted in the submitted landscape plan. And that should cover what our expectation is for an open space easement in that north west corner. Staff is amenable to the change to condition number fifteenth to um, uh, look downspouts to the corners and then paint to match everything else that they can't do as such. Um, again, as noted by the applicant, we've changed that one quite a bit. We prefer internal downspouts, um, which is why we keep putting it in there for all multifamily design guidelines. Uh, but we're amenable to that change as well. So with that all, oh, and then again, adding the new condition that was discussed in relation to traffic calming best practices or some traffic calming device being determined at the development agreement stage in the future.
At the what stage?
Development agreement stage. So we'll probably write it to say something like it'll, needs to be discussed at the development agreement and we'll let them decide what it is, or if it's a funds that goes into something, or if it's an actual intervention or public improvement, then that would be our recommendation. But I think it would behoove us to maintain as the maximum amount of flexibility for the development agreement.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? I'm sorry. First of all, I'm going to go to uh, Janet Parker, do you have a clarification on the dates?
Yes, sir, I do. The neighborhood meeting letter is dated February the ninth. They held their. They held their meeting on February twenty first at six P M. They had an in person meeting. They also attached a map to the letter they sent out, and we require all of our applicants to include their email and phone number for those people that cannot attend the neighborhood meeting.
Thank you. I'm now going to go to Commissioner Easterwood.
Uh, yes, sir. Earlier tonight, when there was discussion about if an application was denied, that there was a certain period of time before the applicant could reapply.
That would that would not apply in this case because it was referred. Can you go ahead and address that?
Gunner hand director planning or design. So the there's a section in the code that requires change of zones and special use permits that are denied have to either come back substantially changed to be heard immediately or a year to come back as is. As there is no change of zone requested for this case, it's built. You know, there's still entitlements required, but as right to the zone district at least as of right, because there's no changes on a special use permit, they are able to refile as many times as they want.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Straws.
And this is no, this disregard to Mr. Peterson's very complex projects, but Gunner, when when a full commission votes something down like everybody and they send it back. And when do they send it back to you with notes and then you work with staff to what that commission or they just voted down and send it back to us and then we see, we hear these and we send it back up and then if they don't like it, they send it back. I mean, do they give us any type of direction on a project similar to this? Because there have been changes made. We voted to approve this. I sat on the call the last time and went through this the last time and it was a long conversation about, you know, crossing over sidewalks over to the eastern side of the road and then taking it all the way up to State Avenue. And you know, we went, we went through all of that and we approved it. Then they went back and, you know, and unanimously voted to send it back to us with a denial. You know, what kind of, you know, direction? I mean, we're, you know, I know we're looking for density in One Night County. So do they give us direction on what major changes they needed to make to, because this has got to go back to them again. So I don't know if these changes that they've made are going to be amenable. But they, we approved the last iteration of this particular project.
Clarification, it wasn't referred back to us. It was denied and the applicants are reapplying. Is that correct?
That's correct. This this was not remanded back to us. I I I'll be honest, I can't recall exactly the reasons for denial at the Board of Commissioner. I I believe it was neighborhood context, neighborhood character.
Commissioner Ernst.
And the infrastructure issues. That's right.
Yeah, and the road was a huge problem. I have never seen the commissioners so in sync with not liking the project. But the the biggest problem they had was the narrow roads and the ability to get people, kids, back and forth through there as well as emergency vehicles.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner, you have a question?
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Beth?
Can you clarify the neighborhood meeting? Is it ten days or fourteen days? Because I'm looking at the neighborhood meeting requirement and it says fourteen days. And if it was sent out on the twelve, we're talking about twelve day notice.
She said it was the ninth.
Or the ninth. Yeah, it's twelve days between the ninth and the twenty first. And the the neighborhood meeting ordinance says fourteen days notice.
I'd have to double check the notice on the ordinance. I think we've been keeping it.
I'm looking at it. Says fourteen days.
Janet, do you have a comment?
I can clarify that if Mr. Hand would like me to.
Sure.
It is fourteen days. However, the director of planning has the flexibility to to make that change, and it has been ten days for probably the last five to six years. That happened when Director Richardson was here.
I don't see the fourteen days in the in these ordinance. Could can we get a legal opinion on that? Can can the ordinance be waived to less notification time? Twenty seven, one ninety nine. Neighborhood meetings.
Other questions while we get an answer from legal? Go ahead, Mr. Conway.
Yeah, so the plain language of ordinance is fourteen days. And I don't see any provision for latitude.
Okay.
But again,
Ready to make a motion.
As Ms. Janet noted, we've been doing that since well before I got here, so we can change that moving forward.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry. Other questions for the director? Commissioner Beth, you have a motion?
Yeah, I I moved that we set this back thirty days because of lack of notification according to the ordinance. Postpone it for thirty days to the next month's meeting. That will give the people that weren't notified in time that that has adjacent property to to get their their information together and and that that adheres to the ordinance for notifying the residents.
And a motion made by Commissioner Beth is for a thirty day holdover to provide for proper notice to surrounding homeowners. Is there a second? Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been moved and seconded for a thirty day holdover. Any discussion? Commissioner Straws?
Only discussion I have is I don't think it's going to change the outcome of the public opinion and the conversation that we're having today. So we're going to hear this again in thirty days and it's gonna be the same comments. I mean, I mean, by policy or I think we have to do it, but I don't think it's going to change anything we've heard tonight. That's my discussion.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion for a holdover? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Nay.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mueller?
No.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion for a holdover passes. Seven in favor and two opposed.
All right, thank you.
And I'm going to assume that that was on the master plan amendment. We have two applications.
Yes, so I'm assuming if we're going to hold over one, we're going to hold over both. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we hold this over as well.
A motion made by Commissioner Easterwood to hold over the plan review application for thirty days as well. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Beth, discussion? Roll call.
Straws?
No.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mueller?
No.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes. Seven in favor, two opposed.
All right, thank you. We will see you all back in thirty days.
Mr. Chairman, our last application is plan review application PR twenty twenty four dash zero zero five. Willie Brantley, Jr., preliminary development plan to construct a prefabricated commercial building at seventeen eighteen North Thirteenth Street. Mr. Chairman, we held over the corresponding appeal earlier this evening.
I don't see Mr. Brantley still in the room, so I'm assuming that's his request for the the plan review application. Is there any discussion on that? Any questions? Commissioner Miller?
My only question is, isn't this the one we did sixty days? I just want to make sure the motion was right.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion.
I'm going to see if there's anyone in the public that came to speak to this application. Anyone wanting to speak to the plan review application twenty twenty four dash zero zero five, please raise your hand or come to the mic, which there's no one in the audience. So you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will go to Director Hand and get his comment on a sixty day holdover on this case as well.
Gunner hand director of planning resign. Staff agrees with the holdover.
All right, I'll stand for the motion.
Moved to hold over PR twenty twenty four zero zero five for sixty days.
A motion made by Commissioner Miller to hold over plan review application twenty twenty four dash zero zero five for sixty days. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
I thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over passes nine in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, that concludes our agenda. Is that correct?
Um, Mr. Hand wanted to give an update on the C I B.
Okay, thank you.
Just real quick, everyone, gunner hand director planning or design. We had originally scheduled the second meeting of the capital improvements plan by Public Works. They're not ready yet. We hope to bring it back in April, so please look at your calendars or maybe even hold some time. It could be April, it might be May, but we're thinking April. They wanted to coordinate more clearly with the budget team so that you all can see the actual list of projects that will be submitted to the Board of Commissioners for their decision prioritization as such. So it's just haven't gotten there yet. Got there yet.
All right.
Yeah, and that'll be a five o'clock meeting.
I'm sorry.
That'll be a five o'clock meeting in April. As soon as we lock that in with Public Works, we'll send you guys a notice as fast as possible.
Okay, April or May?
April or May. We're hoping April.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Had a unrelated comment. I almost made it on the last case, but I I thought better not to. I just have a quick question and hopefully this is a lesson learned. What we just endured on that last case when we found out that the ten days versus the fourteen days. Surely when we make changes, I know ordinances are checked. Was that just an anomaly situation? That we can, of course, avoid in the future because I I agreed with Commissioner Straws, but I felt compelled because I was caught in that case to, you know, still allow it to be almost corrected, even though there was some amount of of damage done in my mind. So my bottom line question was, was that an anomaly that something, a change was made, even though I know it was the, you know, it wasn't Director Hand?
Yeah, gunner hand director planning resign. I mean, the short of this, I walked into a previous director's interpretation that had at one point been reviewed by legal. I'll tell you right now, there's no way I can find up or dig up any materials on that to prove it. So considering we have new legal counsel, new director, yeah, I'm four years into this now, but you know, I think we can adjust moving forward. I obviously can't go back and change all of those ten day notices for every case we've done in the last four years. But we can.
I totally agree with that.
Moving forward.
All right, other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Beth?
Is there a way that that we can avoid these things? Because notification of of the residents within their their district, the the two hundred feet is a small area anyway, when we're we're talking about notifying people. It is, you know, is there a way to avoid that where we can track better the the notifications out there so we can avoid that? That fourteen days notice, you know, is if you count from the time it's mailed to the time it gets there is is not too much to ask, I don't think. And if we want to change it, then change it, but maybe we need to send some wide mail.
The requirement of the neighborhood meeting is incumbent on the applicant to host and deal with. We simply generate a buffer list and give them all the properties within two hundred feet and then give them all of the registered neighborhood associations and HOAs. So I think the letter of the law says it registered with planning, it's actually registered with livable neighborhoods, which, you know, things change over time. And so the Livable Neighborhoods Division now holds all of our registry for all of our neighborhood groups, and there are plenty of homeowner associations, neighborhood groups and other
But then when it when it goes.
Advocacy groups that aren't registered.
I when it when it goes to to the responsibility of the person that that's supposed to send a message out or the letters out to to notify people. Then our our only enforcement of them to hold on to to that is when we get these lists of people that attended the meetings and and stuff is we're at the mercy of what they put on there. We have no oversight over that. So the only other oversight we have is when they're not following the letter of the ordinance to to continue it or deny it.
I mean, they have to sign an affidavit when they submit those notes. So.
But they signed an affidavit and apparently people weren't notified properly or within the time limit. So so that's what I'm saying. It's it's it it fall the the enforcement of it falls on our responsibility when we hear these things and we hear the neighbor's comments and when 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 one of them says or any of them says they weren't notified is is concerning.
To me, I would say two things. One, staff tracks when and if they've had neighborhood meetings, so we can adjust that to fourteen days instead of ten. So if someone doesn't have it within ten days or hasn't scheduled it within ten days, we already hold them over and you don't see that case for another month, right? This one just got to the hearing before we dug into this and discovered a erroneous practice for the last five, six years, right? So, you know, that is unfortunately what it is. And then secondly, not everybody knows what two hundred feet is. There's probably plenty of people who were here tonight that are not within two hundred feet of the property and didn't get a notice and felt like they should have gotten a notice because they were down the street. The requirement is two hundred feet.
But we can get a list for for those that that come to you can get a list of the people that you consider within two hundred feet to notify, right? So we're not dependent on their their taking a tape measure out and measure.
No.
Same, the same buffer list that we use for a protest petition. If it comes to that goes to there, the same buffer list we use for the neighborhood meeting, the same buffer list we use for our own notification of this hearing.
But you provide the list.
It's all the same, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, if they if they want to request that list, that's public information.
Mr. Chairman, the gentleman tonight that said he did not receive a notice of the neighborhood meeting nor of this meeting tonight. He is on the notice on the two hundred foot list.
Okay.
So whether it got to him.
That's the point is we have no way to track whether anybody sent him sent the letter or not.
But we have no way of knowing.
Track our letters.
They didn't overlook it too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it goes both ways. I mean, I got all kinds of mail that I could tell you I didn't get because I haven't looked at it.
Right.
So, I mean, I can't dispute his word anymore, but I can dispute, you know, the applicant or the planning departments.
Mr. Chairman, I had a quick question.
Go ahead.
So the ordinance said, this is Jeff Conway, legal. The ordinance talks about notification of the residents. I noticed this one gentleman said that he has the commercial business. I don't know if that means if he lives there, that's considered, that's interpreted to be a resident or there it's just within the two hundred feet of business could be that area too.
Can you all hear legal counsel?
No, I cannot.
Your microphone on.
The question was the differentiation between resident and or property owner and or commercial business. We sent it to everybody within two hundred feet who owns the property, and I think that's part of it.
So it's property owner, not resident versus. So it's property owner, not resident versus commercial property owner.
On Mr.
Rodina?
Rodina's property. He does own that property. His name, his company is named on it, so, um, they went to the address we have for it, whether that's the address of the mail he looks at, I couldn't tell you. But we have plenty of people who live at a residence and say they don't get it because they don't. The property owner gets it, not the person.
Because it could be a rental property or something like that. Okay.
So there's all of these nuances to state statute. We stick to state statute for a bunch of different reasons. And we've gone through this before. It's not the greatest excuse, but it's not easy to create a buffer.
And that's also why.
Sound like it's a click of the button. It's much more complicated than that.
But that's also why it's posted, correct? While there's posted notices of a change of
Correct.
zone or anything like that. So if anybody that lives within the two hundred feet sees that and they didn't get a letter or they claimed to have not gotten a letter, that doesn't preclude them from picking up the phone to find out what's going on, correct?
I'm the first person to, to say that we can always do better engagement. We can always do more engagement. I say it all the time. Um, it's an imperfect process and we do our best with what we have and right now. We're, we're doing the best with what we got.
Sure. Other questions, clarifications needed before we adjourn? All right, that ought to do it.
Yes, sorry. I just thought of a last second question. So is the two hundred foot rule, is that, are you saying that state statute?
Yes, it's in our ordinance too.
Okay, I just was always curious where that number came from, so that helps.
Did you provide that clarification, Jim? I'm sorry, I was listening to Commissioner Beth. All right, with no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you next month. Along with most of the people in the commission tonight.
Thank you.
Good night, Janet.